I think we're in the safest place.
Yep.
Are we ready? Yes, it's not where either. Where should I go? All right, we'll get the meeting started. Good afternoon, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Marion City Council Work Session for Tuesday, February twenty first. First on our agenda is a promotion, so turn it over to the chief. Would you like me to come down there, Chief?
Yeah.
That's classic.
Come on up. So today's one of the better days to be the chief because I get to formally promote a deserving officer Jimmy Hunter to the rank of sergeant. I believe an organization's success is highly dependent on the frontline leaders, and for that, that's our sergeant position. They have to be mentors and role models for the officers working under them, and they're normally the first ones to feel the complaint from a community member who's unhappy with the treatment they receive from an officer or a service which was rendered or not rendered. Some of those instances, the officer might have done everything right, and we we expect our sergeants to explain that to the complainant in a fair and calm manner. Other times, the complainant complaint may have merit, and our accountability process starts with our sergeants, so they have to have unquestionable integrity. When something bad happens, really bad, sergeants are usually going to be the first ranking officer on the scene, and will have to make those initial tough calls or decisions which have a major impact on the outcome of the situation, the well-being of everyone involved, and ultimately how the community views what happened and judges our response. Suffice it to say, we don't take these promotions lightly. To be eligible for the rank of sergeants, candidates must have five years of service as a law enforcement officer. They have to take a written exam which covers the law, our policies, city policies, and makeup of our city government, which includes having to name at least four of you. They actually do a pretty, they actually do a pretty good job of it. No, I was gonna say they, I've got that. They actually do a good job, but we don't count spelling because who can spell Abu Asali or Sarnad, you know? And then they have to go through an interview process with a panel made up of sergeants and lieutenants from other agencies to remove any biases that people may have within the organization. The top ten scores are put on a list, which is ultimately approved by the city council, I'm sorry, Civil Service Commission and the council, and that makes them eligible to be promoted. While the test and interview scores are important and help ensure a candidate is technically competent enough to do the job, there's a couple of other things I look for in a candidate. I look at a candidate's overall attitude. This job can be tough, and low morale is like a disease. When I think of a leader, I see someone who understands hardships and understands they exist, but doesn't dwell on them and spends more time looking for solutions than they do about complaining about something. I want the candidate to be upbeat about the department as an organization, the city, and their coworkers. I also look for someone who raises their hand when we ask for volunteers and someone who proactively addresses issues as they come across them and doesn't wait to be asked to handle it. Probably the most important, I watch and see who other officers, new or otherwise, approach when they have questions, concerns, or wants some advice. If I see that happening time and again, then I know that candidate has the true ability to lead. Jimmy Hunter meets all those qualifications. He's been an officer for over ten years and consistently is one of the most productive officers regardless of what shift he's been assigned to. He volunteered to be a member of our SRT team or SWAT team. He's also volunteered to be on our recruitment team to recruit new applicants. He's a field training officer, a defensive tactics instructor, and he took it upon himself to organize a jujitsu training program for other officers because he thought it would benefit them. Jimmy does well mentoring and teaching younger officers because he's approachable, patient, and truly wants to help them learn how to do this work. He does a great job interacting with the community because of his demeanor, quick smile, professionalism, and his true desire to help. So this promotion is earned and well deserved. We actually promoted him two weeks ago, but we couldn't get in front of the council then, which is why we're doing it today. But I'm excited for him. He's worked hard for this, and he's got a bright future in front of him, so please join me in congratulating on on this important day. And his wife Hillary's gonna come up and pin the badge on his chest.
Thanks for here.
Yep. We got that covered.
Okay. Next on our agenda is a presentation regarding the audit report.
Thank you. I've invited Jennifer Decker, CPA and partner at Hogan Hansen, to come and present on this item.
Welcome back.
Hello, everyone. That's a tough act to follow, and I won't get quite as much applause as that, and I don't, I don't think I deserve it either, so. Good afternoon, Mayor members of the city council. My name is Jennifer Decker. I'm with Hogan Hansen, and I would first like to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to perform the city's audit this year, and I'd also like to thank Leanne Carey and her staff for the much assistance that they provided while we completed our audit. Hogan Hansen issued an unmodified opinion for the year ended June thirty, twenty twenty-two, and overall, the city is in financially good condition. I would like to share a few highlights from the twenty twenty-two audit, which presents the financial statements of the city on the accrual basis of accounting, which is different than the cash basis of accounting used by the city throughout the year. The city's total governmental fund balances, which includes the general fund, debt service fund, capital projects fund, and special revenue funds increased by approximately nineteen point nine five million dollars for the year. The general obligation debt of the city increased by nine point two one million. As of June thirty, twenty twenty-two, the general fund, which is the chief operating fund of the city, had a fund balance of fifteen point six million dollars. Total expenditures of the general fund for the year were approximately twenty-six million. The city's total business type activities net position increased by approximately three million. The business type activities of the city include the sewer rental, sewer rental replacement, city communication and utility, solid waste, solid waste replacement, urban forest utility, as well as the urban forest replacement and storm water management funds. Some financial highlights, which were in the news release that went out to various media, the city's revenue totaled seventy-seven point five million dollars for the year ended June thirty, which is a twenty point five percent increase from the prior year. Revenue included thirty million in property tax and tax increment financing, eight million dollars in local option sales tax, eight point three million in other city tax and special assessments, thirteen point eight million from charges for services, seven point six million from operating grants and contributions, eight point two million from capital grants and contributions, seven hundred thousand from unrestricted investment earnings, and one hundred and fifty-seven thousand from other general revenue. There was also a one hundred and twenty thousand dollar gain on disposal of capital assets. Expenses for city operations for the year ended June thirtieth totaled fifty-four point five million, which is a twelve point five percent decrease from the prior year. Expenses included sixteen point eight million for culture and recreation, fourteen point two million for public works, three point nine five million for general government, and expenses for business type activities totaled approximately ten point four million dollars. The city's financial statements also include data from the component units of the city, which include the Marion Water Department, Friends in the Marion Library, the Marion Public Library Foundation, Marion Parks and Rec, as well as the Marion Firefighters Association. Even though these entities are legally separate, since the city is financially accountable for these organizations and the relationship is such that exclusion would be, would cause the financial statements to be misleading. During the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, the city of Marion expended over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal expenditures. Back in the back of your audit report on page seventy-four, we detail the schedule of federal awards or the CIFA, and due to meeting the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold, the city did undergo an additional audit over its major federal program, which this year was the Highway Planning and Construction Assistance Listing Number twenty point two oh five, and pages seventy-seven through seventy-nine detail the audit report related to the major federal program. During our audit, we are also required to report internal control deficiencies. On pages eighty-one and eighty-two, we have summarized our findings to material weaknesses in regards to segregation duties and financial statement preparation, and these are the same comments as in prior years. We are also required to summarize other findings related to statutory reporting. These are found on pages eighty-three and eighty-four of your report, and these are either a yay or a nay. Disbursements did not exceed the amounts in the certified budget. We did note a questionable expenditure related to flower arrangements sent in the amount of seventy-six dollars. No expenditures of city money were noted for travel expenses of spouses of city officials or employees. No business transactions were noted between the city and city officials or employees. No transactions were noted between the city, city officials or city employees related to chapter sixty-eight B of the Code of Iowa. Surety bond coverage was in accordance with statutory provisions. No transactions were found that we believe should have been approved in the council minutes, but were not. We noted no instances of noncompliance with deposit and investment provisions of chapters twelve B and twelve C. There was a finding related to revenue bonds in which the section six of the sewer revenue bond agreement requires sewer rates to be established, which are sufficient to produce and maintain net revenues at a level not less than one hundred and twenty-five percent of the next year's principal and interest, and the during fiscal year twenty twenty-two, net revenue was one hundred and nine to the deficit, which does not cover one hundred and twenty-five percent. The annual urban renewal report was submitted timely. The city completed and filed the AFR by December first as required under chapter three eighty-four point two two of the Code of Iowa. So that takes us through the statutory requirements, and then if there are any citizens interested in reviewing the full copy of the audit, it is available both from the finance department and on the, our friends at the Iowa State Auditor's website. And if there are any specific questions from any of you, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
She gave me five minutes, so I tried.
Pretty good. Questions, Steve? Go ahead.
Just a question, not related, my question is related to the preparation of the audit, so a smooth audit always goes well if the staff is prepared, work papers are ready for the auditors when they come in. How do you rate the city's staff as it relates to the preparation expected?
Well, an accrual basis city audit is quite an undertaking, and so there there are a lot of things to do related to cash to accrual conversions and things of that nature. So they're they're already playing under two different sets of accounting principles, and I would say they do a fine job of getting ready for the audit.
As expected. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, your honor.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, just relative to the control deficiencies that you identified, you said that both areas had existed or are pre-existing areas?
Yes.
How how long have those been in existence from your perspective?
For the entirety of auditing standards.
Yes. Okay. All right. Thank you.
No problem.
Anyone else? Okay.
Very good. If you come up with additional questions, please feel free to reach out to me at my office.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is a presentation by Area Ambulance Service. Chief Fagan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In my first several months here, a lot of my work was focused on learning and listening, and one of our important partners in our community is Area Ambulance Service, who provides the ambulance service to the city of Marion. And so with us tonight, we have Jennifer Beaton and Keith Rippey from Area Ambulance. Over the past several months, I've had an opportunity to meet with them and talk about operations and how we can continue to work together to continue to provide great service to our community, and so they're here tonight to talk about their program and service delivery, and so I'll turn it over to Jennifer.
Thank you. We really appreciate the opportunity to come and share with you a little bit more about our organization. Again, I'm Jennifer. I'm the Vice President and Chief Operating Officer at Area Ambulance Service. So I'm gonna run through, I still have about fifteen minutes. I can get a little hoarty sometimes, so I'll try to stay on task here. So Area Ambulance Service has been around for fifty years. Last year, we celebrated our fiftieth year anniversary. For many of those years, we operated under the umbrella of Mercy Medical Center to, they were subsidizing the ambulance service. On January first, two thousand and six, these communities came together to do a twenty-eight E cooperative agreement. So our organization is actually owned by this governing board of directors. Five entities sit on that board. The city of Cedar Rapids, Mercy Medical Center, St. Luke's, city of Marion, and Lynn County. This governing board of directors is who we answer to and who we report out to. We are a nonprofit organization, and one of the biggest focus targets for our board is to make sure that we continue to be a self-sustaining organization, receiving no subsidy. So no tax subsidy, no subsidy from the hospitals. We provide ambulance service to these communities without any subsidy. We are financed by the trips that we do. So a quick operational overview, we service about two hundred and sixty square miles here. Fifteen communities that we transport, we provide nine-one-one service and and transport for. This is just a really quick picture there. We do this with about seventy-five to eighty paramedics, advanced basics, and EMT basics. We have six frontline supervisors, six administrative staff, support staff in the office, that includes Keith and I, fifteen ALS ambulances. We have plans to expand that and add to our fleet two more this year. We have two supervisor vehicles. We put out UTV and ME van and a sedan, so these are the the basic resources that we have to provide the service that we do. We provide our nine-one-one service with what we consider to be dynamic deployment, so we are a secondary piece app, meaning nine-one-one goes into the city, your city dispatch, Cedar Rapids City Dispatch, and then we're notified when we have a call to respond to. We enter information into Arcad and then deploy accordingly. We don't have fixed posts. We do dynamic deployment, meaning we sit on street corners based on the historical data that our Arcad tells us where calls at four o'clock on a on a Tuesday or a Wednesday are most likely. Arcad accounts for traffic patterns, historical exceptions, things like that, so we know where to position our units ahead of time where those calls are going to come in. We look at unit hour utilization, meaning how many unit hours, this is a fully staffed ALS ambulance, how many unit hours does it take for us to provide service every twenty-four hour period? And then we rely definitely on our tiered response to our partners in these communities, fire department, police department, to show up on scene to stop the clock, start providing care, and then we show up and and transport. Calls for service, last year, we did over twenty-seven thousand calls for service. This year, we're on track to do twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred, quite a few calls for service, so we average approximately seventy-six calls for service every day. I was kind of surprised when I extrapolated that out, eleven of those calls for service every day here in the Marion community.
How many? Sorry?
Eleven. Yeah, yep. Now, about we have about a twenty percent cancellation rate, so those calls for service, that's any time that that we respond to any kind of a police standby, fire standby, things like that. About twenty percent of those calls for service don't result in a transport for us. Everybody's always concerned about response times when it comes to the service that we're providing. When we take calls in, we assign all of the calls various priority codes. Here in Marion, life-threatening emergencies, these are emergencies that require a lights and sirens response called priority elevens for us. Priority elevens, we are required to, from the time that the call comes in till we roll up on scene, we're required to provide that service in nine minutes or less. Priority twelves are still nine-one-one calls. These are calls that don't require a lights and sirens response. Those are twelve-minute response time requirement. We do not look at our response times in an average, with an average number. We look at fractile response. So fractile response means that we look at every call in that two hundred and sixty mile square service area, and we look at what percentage of those calls that we're making in that response time threshold. So our goal is to make all of our response times ninety percent of the time or better. So if a priority eleven license sirens response takes nine minutes and one second, we call that a, an exception, and we look at the why behind that. We look at how many calls were going on at the time, where did we respond from, what were those criteria that played into it that we didn't make that nine-minute response time? So what you're looking at here is our average then response time, so knowing that ninety percent of the time is our goal to make those response times, you can see that our P elevens are life-threatening emergencies. We do fairly well. We stay above that ninety percent threshold most of the time. We struggle a bit with our P twelves. P twelves can, those are those non-life-threatening emergencies. We have a lot of stoplights, and we have a lot of traffic, and we always kind of joke that Marion has the ability to drop two or three calls at the same time, so it gets hard for us to dynamically deploy. We send that closest unit, and we don't always have time to repost to get that other ambulance heading this way before that call drops. In September, we started, you'll kind of see, August was a really rough month for us, so in September, we changed our posting criteria, so we have priority posts, and we started posting a second ambulance here in Marion all of the time. So we will backfill that second post here before we'll fill some of the other posts in our service area. So these are metrics that we look at all of the time. We report these out to our board, and we certainly will continue to work to make improvements here. A brief financial overview, like I said, we are not-for-profit, however, we have to operate and and support ourselves, so our average unit hour cost is one hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty-one cents. This is a fully equipped ALS unit in the system. We rely on four primary payers, so we're constantly watching our payer mix. Private insurance, those are our great payers. About twenty percent of the transports we do, we get reimbursed by our private payers. Medicare is about fifty percent of our payers. Medicaid, twenty percent, self-pay is ten percent. Now, our reimbursement rates have remained relatively flat, and like most industries, we've seen our expenses raise exponentially, and so I just pulled some of those highest ones that we've seen and we've been watching over the last couple of years. Fuel obviously has increased quite a bit. Medical supplies, we have to plan for some of the supply chain challenges, and so we have to kind of hold a higher inventory than we normally do, but we've seen these increases, so while our expenses are increasing, our reimbursement isn't necessarily keeping up as well. So what we have done is we have worked really hard to make sure that we remain fluid with what gaps we fill in the community. So what you're looking at here is a slide that we reported out to our board. The green box is our transport revenue, so when we do a medical call and we transport and we bill for that, this is what that revenue is. Our blue box here are the expenses that we have. And what you can see is back in fiscal year twenty twenty-one, our transport revenue covered our expenses, which is what our goal is. But as we've seen the shift of that flat reimbursement rate and our in, our expenses increase, what we rely on now is what we call our contract revenue. We hold a contract with Lynn County to provide sobering services at the Mental Health Access Center, so that's completely unrelated to our transport and our nine-one-one, our ambulance service. We also hold a contract with Lynn County to provide medical examiner transportation, so when we have a deceased body that needs to go to Ankeny, we provide that transport and then build a county for that as well. So these contracts, standby events, that's another one, we partner with the cell, it's not the cell center, the Alliant Tower, we partner with them to do standby services, and that also helps subsidize then some of these expenses. Again, the community partnering is huge. One of the big things that I know a lot of people are struggling with is is having the quality staff. Paramedics are short throughout the nation, and so what Area Ambulance has been able to do is become the first ambulance service-sponsored training program in the state of Iowa. So we worked with the state of Iowa to be able to train and certify our employees. Right now, we are cleared to take our folks that are EMTs to an advanced EMT level. Our goal is within twelve to eighteen months to be able to start certifying these folks at the paramedic level, which is where we need to have them if we're going to be able to provide that ALS service. We had our first class finish up and test. We've got, it was an eighty percent test-out rate, and so we're really excited about that. The other thing that this does is it provides our employees with an opportunity to turn around and teach, which is kind of nice when they're not in the trucks responding to those calls all the time and can kind of tap into some of their other skills, and so they get really passionate about being able to pass on their knowledge to their coworkers. I mentioned the Mental Health Access Center. This has been huge. This is a great resource in our community. We've struggled to get it up to full utilization, but what Area Ambulance does is we provide staffing in the sobering center twenty-four seven. So we have all of our folks certified and able to be able to go over and and staff that for a twelve-hour shift. Again, this has been a nice contract that's been able to bring in some extra revenue. We focus a lot on our charitable giving. We write off a lot of our transports. If we, we follow the same kind of poverty guidelines that the hospitals do, they can, people can request write down on their bill or for a bill to be forgiven, so about half a million dollars we're looking at that we do in charitable transports. We do a lot of the standby services for free, so I know your community does a lot of fun activities in the spring and summer that will provide standby service for. We also do all of the PD and fire standbys, so anytime the fire department gets dispatched on a fire call, we're there to, not just for for the members of your community, but for your fire department to rehab and make sure that they're continuing to stay safe as they're engaged in those fires. And one of our fun activities that we just did, we got to donate an ambulance to the Ukraine. We got to partner up with a gentleman out of the Quad Cities, and so we sent one of our old, we were going to recycle this unit, we were able to send that overseas, pack it with medical supplies, and our employees wanted to add to that donation, and so we were told that sleeping bags was going to be a great thing, so our employees were able to provide probably about fifty sleeping bags in the back of that, so that's been kind of a cool thing. Here's a couple of pictures that we got. I said it looks a little bit like Cedar Rapids in the winter, but so that's been really exciting for us to be able to follow. We focus a lot on corporate culture at area. It's a, it's a hard job, as most people know, and so to keep quality people and to create a work environment that encourages people to come and encourages people to stay is not always easy. So we have a culture team. This is a picture from last September. This group decided to put together a nice award ceremony, but this is a group of really passionate medics that have set a standard at area about how we're going to have set a standard at Area about how we're going to interact with one another and how we're going to address conflict and have difficult conversations. And as we look across the, as we look across the state and we see other services that are really struggling to stay fully staffed, we've been very blessed to have these individuals in our, in our organization that take it upon themselves to go recruit at the local colleges and really speak highly. So it's, it's been an exciting thing to watch this group. We do a gap M survey. So twice a year, we send out an anonymous survey that looks at thirty-three culture metrics. This is a tool that we've used for probably over a decade. And we were pretty excited because the last survey that we did, we had our highest scores in some of these metrics that we struggle with. So the lowest one there is trust in your teammates. So one of the things that we constantly talk about is how to increase these, these metrics. How do we increase trust in your teammate? How do we have accountability conversations, things like that? So these are all metrics that we focus on, and we find that that really helps us with recruiting and keeping people. So I'd love to answer any questions. There's anything?
Steve? Yeah, I've got a couple.
Please.
You talked about your response time.
Yes, sir.
Targets. Is there any other quality of service measurables that you use besides response time?
Sure. We have a KPI, key, key performance metrics that we look at. And so we look at all kinds of things from, we send out customer surveys. Every week, we send out over thirty surveys to folks that have been transported. We ask them to rate the service that they, they got. We look at a, a lot of our clinical metrics. We look at our RASK, which is Return of Spontaneous Circulation. We track a, all kinds of metrics in that KPI. Share that with our board.
Uh, second question. We've obviously been lucky to be informed that the city Marion is going to be now receiving or will have two new emergency rooms by summer of twenty-twenty-four.
Yes.
How do you see that is going to impact the service that you provide, and how will that impact the citizens of Marion? I, it seems positive, but I'd like to get your comments on how that impacts your service.
Sure. We're constantly looking. And, you know, one of the challenges that we have is volatility. We can have a, a call for service day where we respond to over a hundred calls for service, and the very next day, we can have a day where we're responding to forty calls for service. And so staffing for the surge is what's challenging. What's nice about the freestanding clinics is the two hospitals are heart owners of Area, so we get to be at the table as they plan that and they talk through that. And so those are scheduled transports that we can staff for specifically. So it's nice for us. It's a good revenue generator. The nine-one-one calls or what the medics choose this job for, those are, you know, the, the calls that they enjoy. But we work really hard to educate and let our folks know that it's those scheduled transports that make a big difference when it comes to remaining self-sufficient. And so those transports out of those freestanding EDs to the main campus, that's how it works in, in Hiawatha. Most of the time, it won't take very long to be able to trend that and to know how many you're going to see every day and staff for it.
Okay, thank you. I, I've got two general questions. You commented about dynamic deployment. And as, as I think I understood your description, you try to anticipate where you need to be geographically placed in order to be most responsive to the needs that the community has. And I suppose that can change week in and week out or month in and month out?
Week in, week out. I don't know about week to week, but definitely the day, the time of day and the day of week. So you definitely, from like eight AM to five PM, we get a lot of calls in that downtown area. At six PM, we'll see it shift to maybe along Edgewood where people are out having dinner and things like that. So our CAD does all of that automatically for us. And so it lights up with the colors and tells us, right now at this date and time, this is where the highest likelihood of a call is going to be. And so we can post then according to that.
Okay. All right. And then, so that's, that's interesting in a, in a sub-question that I have on, on that dynamic deployment model. And, and Chief, this maybe is more in your realm. You presented to us your GIS analysis of where we have the highest risk in the community. I guess the question is, and you don't need to answer this tonight if you don't have the information. I'm just curious how the dynamic deployment overlays with your risk analysis in terms of where the hotspots are in the community.
We haven't made that connection.
I, I figured.
But I think it would be a, a very interesting look to see how we know where our concentrations of historical call volume are, are hotspots. The vulnerable population data that we shared with you last November was based on that social vulnerability index, which drives numerous things, not only for the placement of emergency resources, but also where there may be opportunities for community risk reduction activity. And so those are things that, that we look forward to, to building opportunities on in the future.
Yeah, I, I just wondered if there was any kind of alignment or correlation between that analysis and what you're, what you're attempting to do relative to, you know, live deployment of resources.
I would anticipate that there will be a lot of alignment because the calls that were going on that are EMS-related, and the calls that they're co-responding with us would be the same calls and the GIS locations of those incidents.
Okay. So the, the last question I have, and you had the slide about transport revenue and contract revenue, and I think that's aggregate for all of your operations across, you've got three fiscal years there.
Yes.
I'd be interested at some point in the future to see how that same general representation breaks down to transport revenue relative to Marion expenses that are incurred because of Marion's activities or support. And then if there's any ancillary revenue, just to make it instead of holistically system-wide, is it possible to break that down to Marion? And if it's not, that's okay too, because I understand that that could be a data headache.
You know, I think we could definitely do some good calculations to get some quality estimates to you. We know exactly how many calls we run in your community and what kind of calls those are. We have great data that we can mine, and then we can make pretty good estimates based on that unit hour. We talk about that unit hour, you, our budget, everything, our expenses, everything that we do is based on the unit hours that we put into the system. And so we could definitely get some pretty close calculations for you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Great. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Okay, next on the agenda is a presentation from Chief Kitzmiller.
Good afternoon again. Wanted to talk to you about ATEs, Automated Traffic Enforcement Cameras. As you know, our department, like most others in the United States, we're experiencing staffing issues. We've implemented various strategies to try to maintain the level of service we provide to the community. But even with those strategies and everything we're doing, our low numbers are having a negative impact on what we've traditionally been able to accomplish. One of the areas that's suffering is our traffic enforcement. And you know, the purpose of traffic enforcement is to reduce accidents by deterring dangerous behaviors. There's two intersections here in town in particular, Highway one-fifty-one and Highway thirteen and Highway one-hundred and East Post Road that are particularly bothersome to me. And I base that on statistical data as well as the speeds going through there and then the type of vehicles. We seem to have more semis going down those two or through those two intersections. We simply don't have the resources to sit there twenty-four hours a day, and I'm hoping some of the data I show you will, will kind of be an eye-opener on just how prevalent these violations are at these two intersections. So here's our staffing numbers. I'm sorry, that one's up in the top. I believe that's December of twenty-twenty-three. So we've only been fully staffed five of the past thirty-seven months. We're allocated forty-eight officers is what our staffing level is. We're running about fourteen percent low. I can tell you on those months that we did have people, forty-eight bodies, or we were paying forty-eight people, we had at least two in the academy. So we were still operating under where we, we would like to be, to be operated efficiently. As of today, we've got five vacancies. I've got two people in the academy and three people out on limited duty that have been out for over a week each and probably will be out several weeks, which puts us about twenty percent down from where we should be with our staffing level. I don't see it getting any better. We are hiring. We're testing this weekend, but I see this continuing to be a problem for us going forward. And when we have fewer officers on board, this is what it comes out to on the street. So we have shift minimums for each of our shifts. That's based off of historic knowledge about call volumes, the type of calls, things like that. They vary from hour to hour. But last year, forty-two percent of our shifts were at shift minimums. And of those, twelve percent of those, we had to pay somebody overtime to come in just to get the shift minimum. And what that equates to is we've got less time for anything proactive. So the officers, when we're at shift minimum, they're hesitant to get involved in anything other than calls for service. So they don't get, they're not out doing traffic stops and things like that because they don't want to get tied up on something when a call comes in when there's only three or four of them working. If we take somebody to jail, if we have somebody tied up at, say, a, a long report, you know, we wind up with two guys covering the entire city. They're not going to get tied up on anything proactive. So this is kind of the results. It's small, but the community area policing is the blue, or the blue lines to the left. The yellow is extra patrols. Proactive patrols is the darker blue. I'm sorry, is the green and then traffic stops is the, the column on the far right. And you can see those numbers for twenty-twenty-two. That was the, the full year. Traffic tickets, again, twenty-thirteen to twenty-twenty-two. Last year, we wrote just under two thousand, one thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight tickets. That's down fifty-four percent from what we wrote in twenty-sixteen. About twenty percent, I'm sorry, two percent of our tickets have been red light tickets. And if you look at the numbers, twenty-five percent of those red light tickets have been either at the, the either two intersections I talked about earlier, thirteen and one-fifty-one and one-hundred and East Post Road. And just on those tickets too, I tried to pull it up and we, a bit of good news, better news. We've had, we flipped the switch on our records management system this morning, and things are going well, the new one. That's going to allow us to pull data more easily. I tried to pull out the number of tickets that we wrote to people from Marion. I couldn't do it this morning, but I know the last time we did it about a year and a half ago, it's about fifty-six percent of our tickets go to people that don't have a Marion address. So speeding. Historically, about thirty-five percent of the tickets that we write are written for speeding violations. We presented some of this data to you before, back in twenty-twenty-one. Engineering put out the traffic counters on Highway thirteen. That was between Highway one-hundred and Lin Air, and we also put it out on Highway one-hundred between Munir and Thirty-first Street. Highway one-hundred between Thirty-first and Munir. In a week's time, the speed limit through there was fifty-five miles an hour. We had a hundred and thirty-one thousand cars, trucks, motorcycles or semis come through during that timeframe. Forty-nine thousand of them, thirty-seven percent. Forty-nine thousand cars were going ten miles an hour or more over the speed limit, ten to twenty. We had another seven thousand vehicles that were going twenty, twenty miles an hour or more over the speed limit in that week's time that those traffic counters were out there. On Highway thirteen and one-hundred, Highway thirteen between one-hundred and Lin Air, we had a hundred and thirty-two thousand vehicles. We had one of the counters failed, so we actually ca- captured three lanes of traffic, but we still had a hundred and thirty-two thousand vehicles. That's cars, trucks, semis. Twenty-five thousand of those were going ten to twenty miles an hour over the speed limit down through there. And another fifty-three hundred or four percent were going twenty miles an hour or more. Seventy-five miles an hour in town is too fast. Those numbers came from both directions on those roads. They were able to count, I don't know the park close here, but the, the traffic counters, they can sense the number of wheels. So you know whether it's a semi or a truck. Eight percent of those total violators were identified as being a truck, bus or a semi. And by truck, it's not a pickup truck. It's like a box truck or a dump truck. So when I talk about efficiencies, I pulled up twenty-eight locations from last year. I had guys go out at various times. We would go out and check them. A lot of these locations, we'd have multiple complaints on. Again, almost forty man-hours. We wrote one ticket, nine warnings and one OWI. That's a week's worth of time for one officer to, to handle complaints that came from citizens or residents that live here in town that wanted us to be out there. Again, just very inefficient doing it the way that we're doing it now. So the red lights. I kind of wanted to illustrate the scope of the problem with the red lights in particular. So I had officers sit out there in the last couple of months at Highway one-fifty-one and Highway thirteen. I had them sit out in four-hour shifts, and we ran those shifts starting anywhere from six AM to about eight PM, so we could capture the, the cars going through there. I asked them to try to count the number of light cycles they watched and how many cars actually ran the red light. And when I told them to count the cars that ran the red light, I said, I don't want anybody unless the light is red and they're completely behind the line. So what they came up with, seven-hundred-and-fifty-seven total light cycles in twenty-eight hours. They watched three-hundred-and-forty-eight cars, trucks, motorcycles or semis run a red light. Three-hundred-and-forty-eight. The most, most of the officers reported at least one instance where two or more semis ran the same red light, one behind the other. The most vehicles that ran a single red light was three semis and one car ran the same red light. Three semis of one car clearly running a red light. I'm going to have, yeah. You want to come up and help me with this? I screwed this up when I put the PowerPoint together. I, this is actually East Post and one-hundred. This is from last year, last March, and I put it in here just to show you how quickly these things can happen. This was a minor injury. But that's how quickly they happen. And had that car not seen the truck at the last minute and brake and kind of cut the wheel, you know, you get two more feet back and you hit broadside on that driver's door. We're going to have a a serious injury or fatality. And we actually did have a, have a fatality at that intersection. It was actually across where that blue car was in January of this year. Same thing, a car, a semi coming down the hill from the other direction, broadside of the vehicle. So we borrowed a traffic trailer and we put it out at Highway one-hundred and East Post Road. The, we had it out there for a week. We, it could only monitor one lane, and so we monitored the far right lane in the westbound side of, of one-hundred. If you look at that intersection from an aerial viewpoint, there's actually twenty-three traffic lanes there. So we monitored one lane for a week. And that's the results we came up with. A hundred and eighty-four vehicles ran the red light and a hundred and forty-eight vehicles were going ten miles an hour or more over the speed limit. This is the same statistics basically in graph form. They didn't give me the number of, of light cycles they watched or the number of cars that went through there, but the graph on the bottom right shows about a ten percent compliance rate. I did think it was interesting that the two, both red light and speed violations, the longer the week went on, that graph seemed to go down a little bit. I don't know if people started noticing the trailer more. It wasn't like we were trying to hide it. I mean, we had it plopped right there on the side of the road, and maybe they just figured out what it was. Or maybe it was something else. So we went back with the officers, similar to what we did at, at Highway thirteen and one-fifty-one. I had them sit out there looking for cars running the red lights. We logged a total of twenty-four hours. They counted seven-hundred-and-ninety-seven light cycles. We tried to monitor more than just that far right lane as best we could. It was difficult, and I think again, that demonstrates how hard these intersections are to watch manually and do any enforcement because there is so many lanes. We documented a hundred and eighty, or I'm sorry, a hundred and eight cars, trucks, motorcycles and semis that ran the, ran the light. So assuming one, one car for each light, that's about fourteen percent of the light, light cycles had somebody run it. Now, I know there was going to be instances where we had more than one, but that kind of gives you an idea of how widespread it is. The accident summaries here in town, that's a ten-year period. At Highway one-fifty-one and thirteen, and then At Highway one fifty-one and thirteen, and then East Post Road and Highway one hundred, we average about one accident per month for the last ten years at both of those intersections. And about half of those wind up being an injury accident. Overall, twenty percent of the total fatalities we've had happened at one of those two intersections. Six percent of the total serious injuries, six percent of the minor injuries and eight percent of the suspected injuries. And so suspected injuries would be if somebody gets bonked. They don't, something doesn't feel right, but they don't want to go to the hospital immediately and there's no visible signs, maybe neck or an arm. They might wind up later, they call that a possible injury. So the cities with, with currently having ATE camera systems and this is based off population. Again, Marion's the thirteenth largest city in the state. There's actually six up there. I had Dubuque on there, Dubuque approved initially what I think what I'm going to ask you to do. And then they changed their mind late last week. And so I put yes and, and I put no, but the no didn't make it onto the slide. So six of the thirteen biggest cities in the state are using these things already. Again, I don't think there is, I know people are passionate, but I don't think they're as controversial as they used to be when they first came out. I think people are recognizing that it's a tool to use. It's effective and it's efficient way of doing things. So Waterloo's had theirs since twenty seventeen. This kind of shows the data that I pulled from them from twenty, twenty thirteen to twenty twenty-one. You kind of see a downward trend. That blue on the top is going to be the property damage and the yellow is going to be the possible injuries. Gray is minor injuries and red is the serious injuries. And they've got a couple fatalities. They're real hard to see, but they're on the bottom there in the dark blue. They cover, Waterloo currently has, I think, twenty-three cameras up. They cover multiple intersections. And I put that up to kind of gauge the effectiveness. Again, Cedar Rapids. This covers five intersections where they've had cameras up. These do not include the interstate cameras. This came out of their twenty, twenty twenty-one ATE report that they do every year. The cameras were actually shut down in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. There's some anomalous, anomaly years in there, but I think generally you see a downward trend coming down the, through the years. I think the one thing that's interesting that I can't find, that I looked for was how much traffic had increased. So some people will see that and say, well, that's not a very big decrease from twenty eleven to twenty twenty-one. But there's no accounting for how much traffic has increased. So I looked at Cedar Rapids. Their population went up, I think it was either seven or eight percent since twenty eleven. So I got to think the traffic volume went up some. I don't know if you can attribute that to this, but if you did, I think that that somewhat may impact those numbers a little bit. But again, you're trying to prove something that's, you know, almost proven a negative, not necessarily, but makes it difficult to make that assumption or that jump, and it is something that I think is worth pointing out. There's some vendor data out there that shows effectiveness. This one I pulled, this came from Texas A&amp;M Transportation Institute. So they focused on a reduction of, of right angle or side crashes at signalized intersections and what was the most effective means to, to reduce those. Speed cameras and red light cameras, thirty-one percent was the number they came up with. The dynamic signal warning flashers, that would be the warning lights you put, you know, two hundred yards, two hundred and fifty yards prior to the intersection that start flashing telling you, hey, the light's getting ready to change. That came in at twenty-five percent. And then license plate readers. So when we're talking about data and technology, I think I would like to see the council consider using these as well. I think a lot of times they can be incorporated in with speed cameras and red light cameras. And what a license plate reader does, it just looks at every license plate that comes through. It runs it through NCIC, which is where we enter in vehicles that are wanting a connection with either a stolen vehicle, a wanted party, an Amber Alert, a missing person. We had the individual that's been missing for about three weeks that we found yesterday. Would have been nice had we had this, that we could have at least get a time range of when he went through that intersection. And again, it's using technology as a force multiplier. It's not a definite need, but it would something be nice to have given, again, our, our lower staffing numbers. So again, I think people are passionate about cameras, but I think I do technical benefits outweigh the negative. I don't want to speak too much about the latest fatality we have, but I can tell you, we got comments on our Facebook page, we got emails directly sent to the police department asking us why we don't have red light cameras down on Highway one hundred and East Post Road. Actually got one yesterday and I won't read the whole thing, but it was an individual from here in town. He was at Highway one hundred and East Post Road on Monday. And he said, quote, "This morning, and as the light changed, not one but two semi trailers blew through the light, one in each direction." And he said, "I just wanted you to know that." So we don't have the resources we had before to do traffic enforcement the way we used to. I don't see it getting any better. I think the data shows that we've got a problem. I think utilizing technology to attack that problem is something that should be considered. The cameras do align with two of the five focus areas in the strategic plan. Effective and efficient government that effectively addresses a dangerous problem and add little or no cost to the city and save communities. Cameras will keep motorists safer and wear and use completely eliminates concerns regarding racial profiling because there is no human interaction between drivers and officers, which was one of the discussion topics that came up when the Equity Task Force was meeting. So I think ultimately what I'm looking for, I'll answer any questions, but ultimately I think I'm looking for some direction. If you guys are open to using these, I would see it being similar to what we did with UTVs, is we could bring back more information and piecemeal and ordinance together. And you would have multiple chances to thumbs up or thumbs down. And the community would have multiple chances to weigh in. If you're a firm no, I understand that. But I think that's ultimately kind of what I'm looking for.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, just wanted to add on to that, you know, when Chief talks about the staffing levels, there are other things that we have been doing as an organization to try to attract and retain police officers. When Sergeant Hunter was sworn in, Sergeant Hunter was actually in one of the videos that we produced in an effort to kind of get out there a little bit more. We've, our, our team has been much more targeted with our, our ads. And so doing things differently, going out to job fairs. So when we talk about staffing, we're trying other things. This is not, this is one, one component of an overall strategy that we've been doing to try to address the staffing issues. We've looked at, we've implemented different, Chief, help me.
We've implemented different shift models. You guys know we changed the animal control policy and, and the contract with that, so officers didn't have to mess with the dogs anymore. We're looking at in the coming month or so, bringing back something to the council about the, the private parking ordinance where we're, officers now have to be present when a car is towed off private property. And I want to change that. So it's, it's one less thing that the officers have to do. Again, I think when we're down to that minimum levels, we're just kind of, we just don't have the abilities that we used to have. And we, the twelve-hour shifts have helped a little bit, but we're still finding ourselves having to pull people in on overtime to cover those. And part of it is, we've got the three that are out unlimited duty right now, but even if they're back, we're still, we're still struggling a little bit.
And I mean, staffing for police, this is, this is something that's happening across the country. So, so it is a staffing thing, but then also from the safety, safety side of things. When we look at one hundred, you know, it's, it's not just this. This is not just the silver bullet that we think. We did get the grant from the state to do some advance warning on that. Mike can certainly talk about it better than I can, but turn lanes and advance notice. So, you know, we are looking at different things. It's not just, just this one solution. We're trying all these other solutions as well, just to maximize the safety of our community.
Chief, I was looking at the presentation that you shared in our packet. And I was, my attention was drawn to the one slide that was about speeding as you've measured it at Highway one hundred in Munir, between, between Munir and, and Thirty First and then Highway thirteen north of Highway one hundred, both northbound and southbound or eastbound and westbound, depending on which, which you're, whatever one you're looking at. I, so I did a little bit of mathematics and I was interested in just the total number or the percentage of vehicles measured that were going sixty-five miles an hour or more. And on the Highway one hundred between Munir and Thirty First, fifty-one percent of the vehicles were going sixty-five miles or more eastbound. And westbound, it was thirty-three percent. And then at Highway thirteen north of Highway one hundred, twenty-two percent of southbound traffic was going greater than sixty-five miles per hour. In northbound, it was twenty-eight. And so I'll, probably somebody, Leanne will check my math, I'm sure, but that seemed astounding to me. It was sixty-five miles an hour or more and they're posted fifty-five, right?
Yes.
And I think that, that, those values coupled up with the video that you just showed us of that one truck blowing through the intersection is pretty striking that we have a persistent, consistent, ongoing safety issue that needs to be mitigated. You made a comment about minimum staffing versus your, your minimum staffing challenges and, you know, versus if you were in an optimum staffy, staffing condition. Well, I don't know that that makes any difference in my mind because there are a lot of higher value activities in the community where you need to be applying your resources. And it seems to me what the, what's at the foundation of all of this is deterrence. That's really what, what this would provide us is a measure of deterrence because just like with Cedar Rapids, everybody knows there's cameras that are operating. Guess what? You slow down because there's community knowledge about that. And that then elevates the safety quotient that we're trying to improve. So I, just my collection of thoughts, but that one slide really stuck out to me as telling the whole story.
Just a couple of things. First of all, Highway one hundred and East Post, I travel that all the time. And the amount of people that run a red light, just the time cycle is incredible. I feel like every time I go through there, I need to just stop and make sure, right, that a semi is not coming. But a couple of things I just wanted to highlight that you did a nice job on. And I've taken a lot of time to think about this because I know there are certainly plenty of people that see red light cameras as, you know, not a solution. And maybe I thought that way at one point in time, so I think I can understand those folks. But I'm in support for several reasons. Number one is safety. And that certainly is a responsibility of ours here in this community is to make sure we're keeping our residents safe. And this is one mechanism to do that at those two intersections. I appreciate your data on that. I think secondly, although this isn't going to be the solution for it, but this desire for us to get to a place where we're doing more community-based policing, that's the community that I want to live in and I know my folks want to live in as well. So this is one step for us to be able to get there whenever we can figure out how to get more folks to be police officers, right? And/or somebody that I might know to be a police officer in this community, right? Still working on it every day, just so you know, every day. And thirdly, and I think just as important is that from an equity lens, we have heard that loud and clear, and this is one mechanism that we can use to take that piece out of the work that you all are doing, right? It doesn't matter the color of your skin or your gender or religion, any of those things. Traffic cameras take that out of the equation. So I appreciate all of the, you've put a lot of work into this and provided some really good data. And I'm certainly, I have changed my mind and I'm certainly in support of this for our community.
Thank you.
Yeah, Chief, appreciate all the, all the information. Again, the one slide that again stood out to me is the same one as Grant, where you got that, that, those statistics on the number, the amount of speeders on Highway thirteen and Highway one hundred. And if I get comments, the most comments I probably get from citizens that talk to me is what can we do to slow down traffic? Because they, they were not in an accident, but they were almost in an accident. And, you know, that's the concern that they have. And I looked at the other slide that kind of stood out to me was the number of total tickets per year. Surprising drop by over fifty percent from two thousand fourteen to seventeen to two thousand eighteen and on. I mean, that's a drop of fifty percent. Now, I can remember the time Marion had an absolute reputation as being a tough city for writing tickets. In other words, people knew from around here, if you're, if you're from around the area, if you're going into Marion, you slow down. And I always told people, I've been to Marion since sixty-two, and I tell you what, I like that reputation. Never bothered me a bit. And I said, if you don't like it, slow down and you're going to be okay. So, so that reputation maybe is a little different today and that's still exists. Well, not according to the number of tickets, because we don't have the police to write them.
Yeah, the stigma still exists.
But I think, I think having a reputation is something that, that I do applaud and I, I guess I like. But the other aspect of this that, and you may not have the information today, but I'd like to see what the other cities are doing. The one piece that I'm curious about, you did not mention that is if we do this, and you come back with a recommendation, if we do this, at what speed limit are those tickets going to be issued? In other words, I always have a concern, the higher that is, all we're doing is raising the speed limit from fifty-five to fifty-five plus whatever that number is. That's always my biggest concern. The bigger, the bigger that number, you still have that many speeders that are not going to get a ticket for any reason or any purpose. I love the flashing lights that we're talking about at East Post and Highway one hundred. I think that's overdue. So as part of that, that's going to help, I believe. But I'm also interested in what your recommendation is going to be interested in what the other cities that have ATEs are using for their number. Because again, just like our reputation, I'd rather be tough on that number than too lenient, so.
Yeah, I think it's either ten or twelve. I mean, they, they vary between ten and twelve. And I think part of that is surface streets versus highways. You know, they give a little more on the highway because, you know, if you're two and along, you know, you can lose track a little bit, but so they try to give a little leniency there, but, but I agree with you.
Again, I'd rather, I'd rather be tough. I'd rather stick with that reputation as being a tough town, a tough city and maintain that. And, and again, if you give me a choice of numbers, I'm going to pick the lower number. So I'll go on record to say that and give you support of that, but I like the overall direction, so.
I appreciate the lengthy presentation. It's very data-driven. Can see the reasons, even, even beyond the staffing piece of it. I think where I, I'm like Colette, like I hear this and I go, when I first came up, I was like, nope. I mean, I was very, very resistant. The information provided leads you to believe like, okay, we see that there, we see why that this can be beneficial to the community and we've seen it in this increase in speeds and traffic and experience it. But here's, I've, I've a couple more, and this would be if we would go that direction. This is kind of where my questions are at. Because I'm all for, I'm all for reducing speed. I was, I was probably kind of the crazy, we lived on the, we lived on the edge of kind of a busy street and I was the one who's out in the yard, you know, waving my fist at somebody because they're flying by me on a twenty-five and probably going over thirty. So I, I am the first to try to call somebody out for it. However, do we know, would we know if we were to do something like this in a reflection on the tracking of it, like how many tickets were issuing to local? How many are we issuing? Like how, you know, how, how, how many of these are for people driving through the community or at least don't have a address in the metro or Marion? And so that we're, if we're seeing, are we like routinely ticketing our own folks? Or are we doing what we want to do, which is part of it is capturing people who are flying through our town and disregarding the safety that comes with it? Because I think we know that people can make a mistake.
People can make a mistake. I mean, there's times somebody you get distracted. I don't like distracted driving, but we all know that something weird could happen. Somebody uh there's fog and that's my kind of my other question. Let's say it's foggy morning. It's hard to see signs. Like when we're looking at these tickets. To be issued, are we looking at conditions that could impact people's seeing the speed limit sign or understanding where they're at? That the only that's I think the biggest thing about this that bothers me is the lack of the ability to. Talk to somebody. You know, you get this ticket in the mail and. There's there's no, it's the ticket in the mail and. She said, yeah, you know, I know you know where I come from.
Yeah, so I would I would anticipate any ordinance that we put forth would have some kind of appeal process in it, whether that was to us. Uh or or to a court. I mean, I would just have to look and see that. Again, whether it's it's somebody local or somebody from out of town, I think you're going to see the the conditioned drivers, like you you said, when you're up on the interstate. Going through Cedar Rapids, you know where that's at. Any any cameras that we put up. We we would have signage within a thousand feet, which DOT requires. Uh it's it's not a secret. We wouldn't be hiding anything. It's literally just trying to get people to slow down and stop for a red light.
And I'm are these, these are speed and intersection, they're both.
Correct, you can get both and then there's some companies that have the LPR system built in to those, so you'd have one set um on the poles.
That's a lot of data, so thank you. Think that I think our problem is going to get worse, not better. So how we're going to address this is going to be our in front of us with this proposals.
And I want to be fair. Again, I want to be fair, but I think Councilman Jensen made a good point and maybe I should just shut up, but. You know, even when we had a reputation, the police department had a reputation for being sticklers on traffic laws. It didn't prevent people from moving here or coming here. The city has grown. People talk, they shake their fists, they get mad about it, but at the end of the day, they still came and they love it here, so. That's my two cents on that, so.
Last summer, fall, I was almost in that that video you showed, that was almost me. I was pulling out on yeah, East Post one hundred. Luckily, there was a big truck next to me, so I couldn't see. Luckily, he didn't go when the light turned green, so it made me think, oh, I shouldn't go either then. Party was flying through, it would have taken me out, so that would have been me. Um so I understand the need for. The red light cameras. I totally see that all the time in that location. I pulled on pulled up on the accident, was it last week? There was another bad bad accident there. And then I see it all the time out out there, the the semis running the the turn red light all the time, all the time. So that's all I'm gonna, we've talked about this a lot, so I'm in I'm in favor of moving forward and seeing. What what we could potentially do, so. Thank you for all your time and the presentation.
Thank you for all your work. Um like like Sarah and Colette, I mean, I think my initial reaction was. You know, the 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 negative sentiment it generates and uh but you know, the one thing that I always am proud of. And with this group is that we we are. Uh fact-based decision makers and and when you're presented with facts and you're making. Well-founded decisions based on data and facts, your personal opinion really doesn't matter. So um I'm willing to continue considering it. Um and um. Yeah, I think that there was something else in my mind that I wanted to say, but um I'm willing to continue considering it and I think, you know, um. When you have compelling data, you know, it's that's that's what speaks. Uh I think if if we did go with this route. Certainly, the the data has to be put out there and the data has to be shared. Um because I think most, the majority of people are reasonable and when they're presented with. The same set of facts, they're going to come to the same conclusion. So uh it has to be accompanied with 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 sharing the data and sharing the facts. Yeah, thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh just here to seek direction regarding the Central Plaza project specifically for a capital campaign. Uh this was a came from recommendation from the steering committee back in September twentieth. Um as a recommendation to do a a capital campaign and this was also um an item that was critical in securing the Destination Iowa grant. That was the city was awarded three million dollars for. Um I did want to note that the uh impact of the capital campaign is. Uh only impacts the city's matching funds and not not the three million that's uh awarded from uh that uh grant. Uh this is a project that the Parks and Recreation Department and the Chamber of Commerce is looking at partnering on. And uh a campaign that's going to be run through and led uh by our uh Parks and Recreation uh Foundation, which we do have a couple of members. Out in the audience, Dustin and Vic uh here from the foundation. Uh and we do have a goal fundraising goal of about uh one million dollars uh 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 for this project. And we got a a good picture of the Central Plaza project for. Uh for the winter time. Uh so the format that we're looking at uh for the campaign, uh we're looking at naming right opportunities and. Uh when we talk about naming rights, uh it is something that we would follow the city naming policies that we have and part of those policies would. Uh does entail existing facilities not being named after uh but uh so the. Uh examples would be like the depot or the park itself, uh but something that would be allowable allowable. Is having the depot sponsored by donor's name is something that is acceptable within the policy. Other items within the policy would be uh good standing with the city uh and things of those na- that nature. Part of the donations, uh we would be accepting of pledges, uh we would work with uh finance and and our city attorney on on developing a written form. Uh for those pledges. We are also looking at a memorial engraved of paver program and there's kind of a picture to show what that would look like. Uh then also accepting of general donations. As far as naming rights, there's a lot of different opportunities with the Central Plaza project uh for naming opportunities and this is something. Uh we've worked on uh utilized help uh from the Light Libraries Foundation Director Amy Geiger. Uh to uh help formulate uh s- some of these uh items uh as far as numbers, uh but we have. Uh items such as a skating loop, uh the water features, playground, benches, uh things of those natures. Uh some high higher dollar items that uh that would give opportunities for naming for naming opportunities. And this is just an overview for those that need kind of the imagery of where it is uh. Throughout this project and this is a pretty high-level imagery, but uh based on uh on kind of that chart that was showing it, it it shows kind of some of those items within the park. The Memorial Engrave Pavers Program that we're looking at is would be something, uh we have pavers um throughout the park. That have opportunities for engraving and this is also an opportunity. For anybody to be able to participate at that a hundred dollar uh uh engraving uh cost. Um uh but we wanted to make sure that people do have an opportunity to contribute to the part of project and be recognized for it. Um and this is actually something uh we just met with the um. I do have an error on there, as I said, installed by the Parks Department, but meeting with the contractors that uh timing of it that uh we can. They'll likely be installed by the contractors. And we're looking at setting up uh using an online system for this, so it's not, the foundation is not seeking names for these engravments, so it's a simple. Just uh using our current uh software system that we have for recreation for these this engraving program. And then general donations, we want to make sure that everybody has the opportunity to donate. Um uh we would do a donation wall. Uh we do have uh kind of levels for this donation wall that we would set the minimum being a thousand, but we do accept donations of any value. Uh but to be recognized and uh provided kind of an example picture of what it of of some. Of a donor wall that's uh uh unique, uh but uh this would be located inside the depot, a space within there. And then provided some uh tiers and and try to be creative and as far as some tier names uh named after some uh train cars such as a. Caboose, boxcar, locomotive or conductor. And so here's uh just a an overview from the project, some of the follow-up that we would do. Uh um if we have direction to proceed, uh we'll see a resolution on Thursday, uh but we would um. Have the foundation set to meet and and kick off this project and hopefully have a campaign that would kick off in March. Any questions?
Yeah, um the just I just have one suggestion of.
Yeah.
The bricks.
Yes.
You might replace the word mem- memorial with with personalized engraved bricks or something like that. Memorial, I think. Can be interpreted as limiting to what it's for. Um.
Absolutely.
I yeah, I'd use personalized engraved pavers or.
Absolutely. Thank you.
But otherwise, I think it's it's great. And I mean, I'll just share with the council. I mean, I've I've had a chance to have input into this and. Uh I think it's going to be a good good and we've already have leads on donors, um so.
Go ahead. Yeah, so Seth, uh one of the sponsorships is uh an annual sponsorship of five thousand dollars for the Zamboni.
So yeah, so that that's going to be something outside of the capital campaign, but it'd be something that we would look for as far as as Zamboni is having. Uh that'd be an annual sponsorship, uh that Zamboni uh. The the ice will need to be maintained and so there's going to be a lot of visibility of that and so we're looking at those opportunities to help. Uh not just fund uh the capital project, but also the operation side too.
So if I if I'm a sponsorship for the Zamboni, how many times do I get to drive it?
You will, you need to be trained.
Yeah, I don't need an answer, but yeah, think about that.
Yeah, I I will think about it. We'll we'll.
Sounds like we have our first donation.
Give me at least once, come on.
You want your face on it and then so.
I want to drive it.
You're going to drive it, though, you have to sing the song. It was Zamboni singing this. I want to drive it, you know. Um you gotta watch, you gotta watch, I'm not, yeah, I won't sing. Did you say um is these multi-year gifts?
So the this is this would be a one-time, so it'd be for the 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 life of 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 the item, so um which. You know, when when we talk about a playground, playground has a a life of anywhere from fifteen to twenty years, so.
If I give you, if I be giving you money, I can't give my gift over three years. I have to.
So yeah, so oh, so yes, we do accept pledges and we'll accept them over a period of time. Uh I think we've we thrown out three years, but that's yet to be determined. We'll work with our city attorney as far as. What those pledges should look like and and there's also the tracking side of it, making sure that uh parks and finance has a way to. Uh be able to track those and and as they're coming in, so.
We'll take your six hundred thousand over three years.
I have to try watching this, trying to speak right now. Um so. Having just lived through this myself, I I just have a few questions. Is your, so is your team, are you leading this, like?
So this is this is going to be led by our our foundation. Um uh I have Dustin Dustin here and and uh Vic here. Uh you know, we're the city's here to help as guidance and and to help follow that process, but this is going to be something led by our found by the Parks Foundation.
And is the foundation, is it a five oh one C three?
Yes, it is. It is a nonprofit, yes.
Okay, so donations will flow through them?
Yeah, absolutely.
Good.
I think it's I think it's great. I mean, just thinking through this, I think it's great that this is happening and um. And it's in perpetuity of the life of or till either side decides they don't want it anymore.
Yeah.
So that's. That's great. I'm just hoping you all have the capacity to. Because it's a lot.
It is.
And tracking these and following up and sending this, this is a lot, so I I. So make sure your team is and the foundation team is ready to. Um take that on, so. And do we have budget like marketing materials on all this or how that all gets?
So that that'd be one of the first steps, you know, I don't want to get too ahead of it ourselves. We did um uh we do have uh uh. Some people on on board with uh with getting some marketing things on and I I know Jill's been working on that. Uh but I want to make sure that we get uh permission to proceed uh before I we just automatically make those commitments, so.
Great, great job.
I think we need to approve it on Thursday if everybody's in favor. Before they spend the time on on putting materials together and the money, so. Any other, yeah, go ahead, Will. Sorry, sorry.
Um as far as recognition, so if. I did a bench, is there going to be a plaque at that bench that says that I gave you money for?
We'll we'll have signage of for these different items. Uh there they'll be different. Uh and we'll work, we'll work with R D G on how and Rennerneck uh or well, I guess whoever the construction. Uh uh for this project is uh on how that that signage is to be determined, so. Uh but yes, there's going to be signage for for these different items, uh and we'll we'll try to showcase that too and as we're communicating with uh potential donors.
But because that's that's actually a little bit of a concern for me is because I wouldn't want to walk through the plaza and. Sign here, sign here, sign here, sign here, sign here.
It would be done peacefully. I mean, and and that's and that's why.
A lot of signs.
It it is. It looks like it, but um. You know, it it can be done very tastily, uh small and and that's why we were looking with working with R D G on 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 making sure that's possible. And why I show like different examples, like the donation wall, you know, we want to think outside the box on how we're doing these these recognitions.
I can see that. It's kind of an artwork.
And there's also a component too of 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 marketing on on, you know, or just how, you know. Who is a contributor for the project for the project and things of that nature, so.
As we get further along, we can and we will bring back concepts to make sure that.
Sure.
We're in alignment with council.
I mean, someone gives six hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Probably not going to have a little practice size, that's.
Yeah.
They're going to want a big sign. I would hate to see a big.
Size of the money.
Yeah, you know, we've got, we've got a sign ordinance, so. No flashing lights.
Well, and and we've been, we've been partnering with the chamber on this as well, so we have that perspective from the chamber. I mean, this is, this is within their wheelhouse as well from the standpoint of um close to the uptown and. Um we want to be, as Seth mentioned, we want this to be tasteful and classy. Um so. If it pleases the council, we will certainly make sure that we we bring back any concepts to make sure we got your final blessing before we actually start. Ordering those types of materials.
Let's raise the money first. We'll get the donors and then we'll figure out how to recognize them. Go ahead, Steve. So I a couple of line items on there were the fire pits and the benches.
Yeah.
And that's, so we've got some of those in the North Plaza. Are those going, I mean, the numbers you have there, I assume are just for.
Just.
The main plazas, or are we just going to exclude the North Plaza for any? Naming rights, or are we just going to do the main plaza only?
I think we could, we can have that for discussion uh with with the, yeah, I mean.
I think it ought to just be clear going forward how we're.
Totally.
Whether we want to include those or not.
Yeah, right now, this was just really focused on 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 the park itself.
I understand.
I think there's offer, there's definitely opportunities to look at that.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay. Seth.
Thank you.
Right. Next is the agenda review. No items are marked prior to A six on page four. Uh are there any? Questions on any item prior to A six? Okay, we'll go with eight six, city manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um. This is something that we're excited to be to bring forward to the council. It's it's my understanding that this was a part of. The Imagine Eight uh community vision process that took place um quite some time ago. Uh we've been in discussions with uh Iman on this and uh our our partners at the chamber. Um so the the agreement would uh be to implement the free outdoor wifi at the City Square Park. We do have in in conversations with Iman, we do have plans to expand it. Um to uh our park system, but we wanted it because this has been in in the works for quite some time. We wanted to. Get going, um which is why we're starting with City Square Park.
Hey, questions? I know, I know. Grant has a question.
I have, yes, two questions, um, will the, will, and maybe this is part of the technical implementation, and maybe I should just withhold, but I'll get my questions on the record at least. Um, it would seem to me that it would be difficult to limit the geographic spread of the, of, of the system to just the area that's noted on this. It would seem to me that it's actually a much wider envelope of, of wifi coverage, um, and, or is, is the idea, and as, has Iman communicated that they can have this specific kind of geographical limitation to coverage?
I believe the agreement says that it's generally that area.
Okay.
With the focus being it within the park specifically, um, Bernard had walked the area with, uh, Terrell to get an idea of where things can be placed to maximize that coverage.
Okay, then the, the other question I had is, is do we know what kind of bandwidth they're gonna provide us?
Generally, it's gonna be, uh, scaled based on
Is your, is your mic on?
Events are gonna be able to scale it up quite a bit, so, uh, we, we got Seth to kind of find out what the average, um, attendance is for events, and we'll be able to scale it up to be able to reflect that.
So that's, I guess I'm thinking.
So, so part of, part of the agreement that we have with Iman, if it's approved, we would have the ability to advance, provide them with advanced notice of when we're gonna have, um, say, uh, Oktoberfest or, um, the yard festival, um, peppermint walk. If when we're having events in the square, um, they'll be able to ratchet up the bandwidth that's coming through.
So, eh, eh, part of that question then is, so that was, that was part one. Part two is, then what is the, uh, what is the anticipated download speed that they're gonna try to provide as a, as a um, element of scaling that bandwidth?
They didn't provide that information. We can, we can surely inquire on that, yeah.
All right, thanks.
Our, our contact could not be here tonight. He will be here, Bernard, from Iman. He will be here on Thursday, so, um, we can, we can prepare him.
Okay, I'll study up then.
Anyone else? Well, I'm glad to see this going forward.
Thanks.
Thank you for your work on it. I know Terrell's been dealing with, with trying to get this done for years. This is an Imagine Eight project, so it's goes way back. So it's good to finally see it, uh, we're, that we're finding a way to get it done and making, making it happen, so. Okay. The remainder of page four is not marked. Any questions there?
Your Honor.
Yes.
If I could, we are planning to remove items A nine and A ten from the agenda with the Senate File one eighty-one having been approved and signed by the governor yesterday. It's going to change our timeline for budget approval, um, out to April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Um, our, our taxable evaluation should be provided to us by March ninth, so we're going to wait until we get our taxable evaluation, and then we will resubmit these two items with updated dates.
Okay, questions on that for Leanne? Okay. Then, um, B one and C one are not marked. Any questions on page five? Otherwise, we have Seth back up here.
Hello, so we have, uh, before you, a, a resolution to enter an agreement with Bo and me, uh, uh, to provide a public access, um, into Indian Creek, uh, so just to go back a little bit, this is, uh, uh, the Indian Creek Master Plan. This was something that was part of Imagine Next, the Future Four, uh, that was in there. Um, we did have the master plan, uh, presented, and then it was, it was received and filed back in December of twenty-two. Um, and this project is really just looking at a partial scope of, of site one of that Indian Creek Master Plan. Uh, we will have follow-up with, with Creekside Pride and a technical side, uh, with the rest of the plan to prioritize those sites and, and develop an RFP uh, to help refine, uh, some of the sites, uh, specifically, uh, looking at scope and, and also funding opportunities. The location of this site, it's a thirty-six thirty Winslow Road, um, I do have a map with a star, uh, pretty impressed with my, uh, graphic design here, um, so. Uh, so just located right behind, uh, uh, just on the east side of Lynnmar High School, so, uh, this is, um, essentially just creating that public, uh, access. This is just a planning project, uh, but this does get it ready of, uh, for a potential bid or for, uh, for, uh, some in-kind cost, uh, in-house. So the project area is really, uh, uh, partial scope of that site one, creating that public access into the creek. And so fo- following this, uh, project is, uh, 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 again, we would, we would work with Creekside Pride and obviously Bo and me to, uh, for the permitting and, and access into that, so, any questions?
Questions? It's great to see that we're moving right in with this plan.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, the remainder of page five, uh, through F four and page six, nothing is marked. Any questions on any of those items? Okay, A one, we have Rachel up here.
On Thursday, we will have the public hearing to adopt, um, or for the adoption of the twenty twenty-three Code of Ordinances. Um, at the last meeting, we went through a review of the questions, uh, of this recodification process. Tonight, we'll just, uh, go in a little more into the changes to the code, uh, and specifically more information about the zoning code changes. So first, just a quick review of this past year. In March of twenty twenty-two, we approved the contract with General Code. They began review of our code ordinances, um, to look at state code references, consistency, language and grammar. Staff also reviewed the code and provided recommendations, um, or known edits that we needed to make. The General Code returned the analysis with five hundred sixty-five questions. Those are reviewed by staff in a final review, um, to all the responses were done by myself and the city attorney. So a few of the changes, uh, major change is a complete reorganization of the code. Uh, it's split into three parts, so for administration or administrative, general, and then franchises. Um, some chapters were combined and then split into articles such as departments or boards and commissions. Um, and then also majority of the code will be alphabetized by sections for ease of access. We removed most business licenses from the code. Um, the Solicitor, Peddler, Transient Merchant License still remains. Um, another major update is we removed the fees from the code. Uh, this will make updating fees much easier. Uh, it'll be done by resolution, and we will have a, a single schedule of fees that will be fees for the city. Some other miscellaneous updates, um, with language title of department updates. I provided just a few examples. Um, citizen was updated to resident, position titles, uh, city foresters, city arborist, and then department names. Then we had four chapters that were removed, two of which are now handled by the state of Iowa, and then two were for franchises that have expired. And I'll turn it over to Nicole, um, she'll address the zoning coaching this.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello.
So in, um, twenty twenty, with the rezoning of the city, um, with our zoning map update, staff decided, hey, now's a good time to really look at our zoning regulations and how everything is kind of formatted, laid out, um, with the new zoning districts, um, that would mean removal of twenty-one sections. So as you can see, chapter one seventy-six is our current, um, chapter. We have fifty-five sections, so with the new citywide, um, zoning update with the map, um, twenty-one of those sections would have been removed, and we would have had a giant kind of blank section, um, towards the beginning of our chapter. Um, with this new format, not only did we get a new chapter number, but we've reduced that down to twelve articles and have kind of grouped things under, um, generalized categories for better use, not only by staff, um, but by developers, um, residents and the like. So, yeah, we started as planning staff in twenty twenty, kind of reviewing the code, and then once, um, the codification process started, really, hey, good, we can then work in any of the amendments that we've been looking at this process, so we've worked very closely with, um, Rachel and with General Code to make sure not only changes they were proposing, um, but changes that we had found or wanted to make ourselves, um, were being incorporated. So with that, um, gonna split it into the minor amendments and major amendments for our twelve, each one kind of being six different articles. So with the minor amendments, um, that's similar to what kind of Rachel covered, um, nomenclature, just making sure any code reference sections were being updated with the new formatting, um, but for the major ones, we were repealing, um, twenty-one zoning districts. Um, we added some new code sections, not many, um, but one or two, and then just kind of making some clarifications. Major ones include rewriting a definition such as retail, sales, specialty, just to better clarify, um, what the intent is. So article two, um, definitions, we've added ten definitions, um, we're proposing to remove ten, and then four major revisions to definitions, so all the definitions that we've kind of done a major kind of touch on or listed up on, um, the screens there. The new definitions, we're looking at clarifying definitions, um, contractors yard, for example, is considered one of our heavy retail um, service uses, so it does fit under a generalized category. However, we've had a lot of questions with new businesses and like, what does that really mean? So we felt a specific definition to describe what that use is um, was appropriate. And then we also, um, added definitions that General Code thought, um, we needed was things we referenced, like mixed use, and well, what is mixed use? How are we interpreting what that is? So we added definitions like that. As far as those being repealed, um, we felt that they were no longer applicable to uses that are occurring, um, or uses that fell under other generalized ones, so it's kind of the opposite, um, where carpet flooring stores, we didn't feel like that needed a specific definition anymore. That is general retail. Um, so just kind of removing some of those definitions to narrow them down, even though we basically added the same amount back. Um, and then just kind of, it said, um, major revisions, we're rewriting those definitions to better clarify the intent, and then with, um, person with a disability, we felt that the definition, um, was outside of how that should be defined, and we worked with, um, the city attorney, um, to determine what that definition should look like, and that was kind of based off of state code, um, civil service, that sort of thing. So article four, I'm gonna kind of breeze through these, but really, it's repealing those twenty-one zoning districts that are no longer, um, indicated on our zoning map. Article six is planned unit developments, um, so with the former, um, zoning map, we listed out planned unit development for residential. We had specific one for commercial, special, so special would be, um, East Town Crossing, where you've got that mix of commercial and residential. Plan development in itself is meant for a mix of uses, um, or a planned area. So we took away the kind of separation of them, um, we didn't feel that was needed, but we did leave the intent paragraphs within the chapter. Article eight, um, we focused more on the parking section within article eight, so not too far back, um, council adopted surface regulations, um, for, um, commercial industrial businesses. We had them already for residential. Within that update, we had the word loading zone. I'm looking through our code, it's like, well, we've got a loading zone section. So we basically did a copy paste to make sure that if someone was purely looking at that loading zone section within the parking regulations, it did mimic, um, the surface requirements as well. And then we added a bicycle regulations, um. This is something that staff currently looks at a commercial site plan, says, hey, we think it would be a good idea if you added bike racks, um, near the entrance or close to where you've got either customers or employees, um, what, whatever makes the most sense. This provides staff some teeth and requirements for those, um, it would mainly look at short-term bicycle parking. Um, the number of bicycle spaces, um, required based on that of the vehicular parking. Um, these do follow the best practices of the Association of Pedestrian, pedestrian and bicycle professionals. Um, so when these were written, it's not just staff sitting there, um, it was based off of a professional group that looks at this information. Then article nine, um, specific use standards, um, we amended the home occupation one, and that was based on new state legislation that was recently passed. We wanted to make sure that what we had in our code, especially with the code update, um, that it was reflecting what the state had recently adopted. Um, their focus was kind of being more flexible with home occupations that are no impact to residential areas, so it's being a little more clear on what that is, um. So we did add two items to our prohibited list. Um, today, we would consider them as impactful, but to add clarity, um, to what those are, just because we have had issues around the city, um, with those, that this just kind of helps, um, be a little more clear that those uses are impactful to residential areas. And then article, um, ten supplemental lot and block regulations, sediment control. There's a completely separate chapter for that, so we didn't feel our one paragraph or a couple paragraphs within the zoning regulations was sufficient enough, and um, it was basically superseded by that other chapter. And then private light poles currently, um, someone could ask the city if they could put their private light pole in our right-of-way. Um, we didn't feel like they should be asking that, um, if it's a commercial development, you really need to be keeping it on your own property with the recently adopted architectural design standards. We have lighting requirements that were put in there to have that zero-foot candle at the property line, um, so in instances like this, well, that's going against our new code section. And then for article eleven, um, the administrative and enforcement, this item falls under the zoning board of adjustment in their powers. Currently, they have the power to deny or approve a special use permit for a functional family, um, so we didn't feel like that was something that could be upheld in court if the zoning board did deny a functional family, um, special use permit. It is also something that in my ten years with the city, I have not seen come forward as a request. Um, so that's something we, um, that would be best, just kind of stricken from our code. So the Planning and Zoning Commission, because it's the zoning regulations, had to review this. They did at their February fourteenth meeting. Um, they didn't have any comments towards it, and they did recommend approval, so we are here with the other part of the zoning or the, um, city code.
Thank you. Sounds like a lot of work.
There any questions to any of the changes made?
Oh, yeah, I would just say, I, I just looked online on the city website, um, and accessed the new layout. I like it.
A lot easier to find things, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions on A three or A four before we move on to engineering? None. Okay, Mike?
Just a few items to talk about. All right, so the first one we're gonna talk about is segment seven of the Indian Creek Trump Sewer. Um, so for this project, we did receive three bids. Um, what we're recommending, um, there's a detailed bid tab, um, online and in the council packet for those that wanna see it. Um, but the base bid was sixty-inch R C. But the base bid was 60 inch RCP pipe reinforced concrete pipe. Base bid plus alternate number one, instead of using very large manholes to have that pipe come in, it was actually using tees instead. And so we thought there was going to be a cost savings with that. Unfortunately, only one of the bids actually had a cost savings. So we kind of threw alternate one out. Alternate two actually provides for a liner inside the pipe. And so we wanted to see what that difference was for just concrete pipe versus having plastic inside that pipe to basically prevent corrosion, having things eat that. Parts of the pipe last longer. So based on that and that the fact that between the the base bid and the alternate bid and the engineer's recommendation that we have from V and K. That's also included. Because of the incremental cost in that and that it's gonna prolong the life of that large pipe. Right now, we don't have a lot of issues with things coming into there. But for example, if you didn't know the leach aid from this, the. Land fill actually goes into our sewer system. And so we don't want that getting in there and causing corrosion or something where to change and we have that material in there. We'd rather have that sealed and not have that. It also is another barrier to prevent water from getting in or sewage from getting so. So we're recommending a base bid plus alternate two. So this will be concrete pipe again with concrete pipe and the larger manholes with the liner in them. The start date would be once noticed proceed is given with a completion date of September 15th of 2024. And $500 per day and liquidated damages. So this is a 12.7 million and change project, but one thing to remember is we're only one entity paying for this. So we are the lead on the project because when our, within our jurisdiction, same thing with the next phase, phase 11. We're paying 32.9% of it, which is roughly $4.5 million. Cedar Rapids is paying 28.5, Iowa Tha 16.9 and Robbins 21.7. And that's based on the agreement that we put together on what we wanted our flows to be. So we will have to cash flow that and we'll work with finance on invoicing the other municipalities as we go forward with the project. So we won't be having that burden the entire time. There'll be a period of time we'll have to cash flow that. And then we'll get reimbursed from the other municipalities based on the 28. So is there any questions on that project? So we'll have a public hearing on Thursday. We did get concurrence from all these entities as well as Lynn County. Lynn County is part of the 28E, even though they're not participating financially.
How many more segments do we have?
So we've only done a portion of segment three, so we are not starting in order of. At the plant and working to the high point, we're actually going where the issues are. So wherever that hydraulic grade line issue is. So Cedar Rapids broke theirs up into a segment three into three phases. We're doing segment seven, which is from Menards to Mount Cavalry Cemetery. The next phase will actually jump and it'll go from Donnelly Park. Basically to our city limits, that's 11, but there's several phases to go. So it's, it's not a one and done here.
Yeah, this seems like it's ongoing.
Yeah, this one we had some landowners that took a little while to get through.
Go ahead, yeah. Mike, going with the lined sewer line, do you have an estimate of how, how much longer that? Preserves the lifespan of that?
Not an exact number, but obviously it depends on how much you actually have for those other materials coming into it. And we just feel like the incremental cost for that, even if it's another 10 or 20 years is worth it.
Alright, but it is many multiple years that you would expect.
Yeah, so again, it's preventing any corrosive stuff from eating the concrete and the rebar that's in there. It also is another intrusion method to keep. Clean water out and the dirty water in.
Right, good, thanks.
Anyone else? Okay. The ramp, the sidewalk ramp project, any questions on that? You see pretty straightforward. Okay, and then the HMA resurfacing project, questions on that? Alright.
So for item E seven, what we looked at was we did area one, which was. North of West Eighth Avenue where we put one side is no parking. What we started to do is when we looked at the next area of town. There's a lot of streets that are less than 26 foot wide in the old part of town. So we started looking at if we follow SUDAS by a T. There would be people that have to block, walk five plus blocks to get to their house if they can't park in their driveway. And so what we did was we met with the fire department. They went out and actually deployed their apparatus. To see what they could do, you know, what is that actual minimum that they need to do their level of service and to do what they did. And so that's the policy that we wrote. And so it's basically those streets that are between. That are 26 or above are going to follow SUDAS standards where we can have parking on one side. Those that are 21 to 26 can have parking on one side. But this is only for existing streets. So we wanted to make sure it was very clear to developers and anyone else out there, if you're building a street today, it's going to be 26 foot wide. If you want to have parking on it. And then if it's 20 foot or less, it's basically going to be a case by case. Check with myself and the fire chief to make sure that we're good with that. You know, for example, if it's a very short street and everyone that's on that street has driveways, maybe we put no parking at all. If it's a longer street, maybe we have to say the ends so that they can bring their apparatus on the street at least. So maybe it's a certain distance from the intersection. And so we'll have to look at that case by case with the road network is, what the actual width is of the street. And bring those recommendations forward as we see fit. So that's what that policy kind of outlines is that it's kind of a tar discretion and recommendation. So once this policy is updated and approved, we would then bring the next segment, we would notify property owners and notify the next segment to continue our. Our no parking policy throughout the city. I don't know if Chief Fagan has any comments?
I would just add, I appreciate working with Mike on this till we can have. To ensure that we're incorporating risk into our standards for our community while still allowing for accessibility of our residents.
Okay, so we have the EMC meeting at six. I'm gonna turn over the meeting to Mayor Pro Tem. We have an EMC meeting at six to turn to.
Okay, any? Any questions on? Okay, E nine, back to you, Mike.
Alright, so E nine is a property acquisition. So Eastern Iowa Coffee is the scooters at the intersection of Marion Boulevard and Twix Town Boulevard. So if you recall, when we did the Boulevard apartments, which would be north of this intersection. As part of that traffic report, there was a recommendation to fix this intersection and clean it up. So we've met with the property owner, come up with a solution so that we can. Keep bus service from different directions, phase it not only for the the bus services that are occurring there. But also for the coffee shop itself as well. So we'll have to. The project to be done in several phases to be able to do that. But as you know, this intersection is not in good shape and it needs it. So it's going to be a full reconstruction. And then we'll actually, as you can see here, this, this concrete becomes much smaller and. We'll actually narrow that intersection in because I know some people, when they're approaching that from the west, they don't know what lane they're even supposed to be in because there's just. A vast amount of concrete there. So E nine is just the purchase of this little pie piece here that you see. And that way we can reconfigure it so that it's at more of a right angle to that street.
Okay, and so E 10 is the calendar for that?
Yep, so then E 10 is the actual project calendar for that project. So. Once that's approved, then it would be released to go out to bid. So the engineer's estimate is $165,300. Bids would be due on the 14th, late start date of 7:10, 23, 40 working days and $500. Per working day on liquidated damages.
Any questions on those? Okay, E 11.
So E 11 is a project that we're doing joint with the Parks Department. A lot of this is the hard scapes, portion of it to go in and fix the curb and gutter and some of the other items that are getting busted up over the year. So this is on 10th Street. Engineer's estimates 126,000. Bid date is also the 14th, late start date of 6:26, 23, 25 working days and $300 per day in liquidated damages.
Any questions? Good. Okay, alright. E 12?
So E 12, as council approved some of our ARPA money going to slip lining projects. We found that the amount of slip lining that we need to do in order to put the plans together is too much for public service to dedicate just that time to do that. So what we're gonna do is go out for bid for someone to go and televise those lines. So that we can make sure where there's protruding taps, where there's services, where there's things that need to be sealed or. Cut off that we can do that with plans together and then bid the project using the ARPA money. For this, to actually get the video, we would use our local annual program that we typically do. And this way we can get a larger chunk of it done. So again, what it will lead into is our slip lining project. Which again is that liner inside the pipe that keeps the clean water out, dirty water in. And then we're not paying to treat water that doesn't need to be treated.
Yeah, Steve.
Yeah, Mike, I, yeah, I completely understand the slip lining project and the need for that. I also understand the limitation on how many. Miles or lack of that that we can do in a year with, what do we do generally about 120,000 or so?
For dollars wise, yeah.
Yeah, for slip lining. So we're doing this, you talk about this televising project. I mean, the slip lining does not involve that many miles of street. How many miles of street are we going to be televising?
So with the ARPA money, I, it's off the top of my head, I believe it was a million dollars that we were putting towards slip lining. So that's why public service doesn't have the manpower to do it. So we gotta do that pre-work in order to do the next phase of it.
Oh, so we're up to a million dollars for the slip line?
Because of the ARPA funds. Remember that was one of the projects that, and it might not be exactly a million, but it was a large chunk of the ARPA money was going towards.
Yeah, I'm thinking of what we usually have for an annual budget and that's fairly small.
Right, so we're drastically increasing it. We need more manpower to be able to do that.
Got it. Alright, thank you.
Any other questions? Alright. Very good. I guess you're off the hook now.
I'll be back.
Thanks for the warning. Okay, we're down to community development, F1 and Nicole.
So that property we're looking at is 1801 and 1833 Seventh Avenue. Is the property that's just west of Wrigleyville. So the applicant is seeking approval of a facade replacement. Through the central corridor review process. The property is zoned at UC1, which is urban commercial and is required to go through this process, even with alteration of material. Or change in color. The applicant did become aware of this process when they came in to pull a sighting permit that's required through the building division. So at that time, they got the planning staff and we kind of walked them through what this process looked like. As you can see up on the screen, the planning and zoning commission did meet on February 14th and discussed this item at their meeting. They did recommend approval. For this request, they did have a few concerns, but they did ultimately recommend approval of it. The applicant was permitted to remove the existing sighting that you see in the screen. It had received some damage during the derecho and the. Like I said, we're ready to work on this project, had people lined up. So we did say yes, go ahead, remove it, do any repair work that might be needed. Just do not put anything up until the process has been complete and you have received approval if that happens to be the case. So I do have a sample of the material that they are providing. So on the screen, I did scan the sighting and tried to represent kind of what that color is, but. They did provide us with a sample so you could see in person what that actual sighting color is. With the central corridor, part of the review is setbacks in form, height, pedestrian scale. Parking lot layout, architectural style and design. Most of that is not applicable since they are not touching the site. There is no addition or expansion of the building. It is purely just a reciting of the existing structure as it sits. So even though the rest of it isn't being looked at, within the Marion Comprehensive Plan. Design standards is a key aspect of the community interest. So that is why. Material change in color was added to the central corridor review process. So in that, the design guidelines do state that buildings should use materials that are. Light muted in color, earth tone, that saturated bright colors should only be used as trim material and not as the primary color. So the proposed color is Cinnabar. That is a earth tone. It is considered to be a muted tone as well. And you've got the sample up there to take a look at. The applicant did choose that color specifically because of the blue. On Wrigleyville, they thought it was very complimentary to what the adjacent building was covered in. So Wrigleyville, it is a brighter blue. That sighting was put up in 2018. Prior to the central corridor review standards being in place. The proposed material is a four inch vinyl lap sighting. It is what is currently up there. And that is what they are proposing to use again. We have permitted kind of a one for one swap of non-conforming materials. So even though the central corridor review standards is not permit a vinyl sighting to be used. In cases where it is an existing building, we have prior to this request allowed. A non-conforming material be used for a non-conforming material, so long as they're not expanding where that coverage is. So for example, the sweet cheesecake that is currently under construction, when they pulled that sighting off, it was cinder block underneath. They were allowed to use that non-conforming material as their main structure. However, the new addition to the building of the sweet cheesecake did have to follow those new central corridor guidelines for material. So that is very similar. In this case, they are wanting to do a one for one swap of what's there in existing. Yeah, so questions of staff?
Any questions? Yeah, sure.
I'm trying to follow along. That I feel like this is kind of like, so the blue is not, the blues, the dark blue is coming down or the dark blue is not coming?
No, the dark blue is Wrigleyville that is not coming down. It would be that kind of light gray tone. They are technically two separate properties and kind of looked at as two buildings.
Okay, so. This is probably, okay, I'm gonna get picky and maybe this is not the time to get picky. But I'm, this is, this is right on the edge of all of this work we're doing in our uptown. And. The sidewalks are wonky. I mean, the whole, there's no brick. I feel like. Like we're gonna put, we're gonna agree to put the, maybe I'm way off. If we agree to put this up. And we agree to this, then we're kind of stuck with it again because they're grandfathered through a whole nother process for a whole nother whatever. I mean, like, when's the next chance we get to? Bring this building up to the neighborhood and what the neighborhood is becoming. Am I way off on this or?
No, again, we did allow a non-conforming for non-conforming for other projects within the corridor. Ones that we definitely would sit there and say, no, you must follow standards are building expansion if the roof was being kind of. Redone and new roof line, complete redevelopment of the project. Is definitely when we would say, no, you need to go back to the drawing board. But because we've had that. Non-conforming for non-conforming swap, that's why staff didn't push it too hard.
Because I look at it this, and again, maybe I'm missing it and I'm, you know, we've pushed. We've had a number of apartment complexes come through here recently and we've pushed back on materials and we've pushed on facades and we've pushed on how this looks. And we talked about reach higher and we've repeatedly really said, you know, this is, this is the. Repeatedly really said, you know, this is, this is the entryway. Road, um, through our community and right on the edge of uptown that we are requiring people to really. Step up and be good neighbors with how your. This looks in our community as people are coming through. And maybe there's not much we can do, but. I'm like, this is. This is about as bare minimum it looks like as you could possibly do without, and maybe I'm completely wrong and I'm just not visually putting that. It, you know, okay, it's two different buildings, but for everybody driving by it, it's one. I mean, people don't know that's two buildings. They see it as one building. I've got two different sightings on one building with some. Really, really narrow sidewalks that have a bunch of grass growing on them. And just, I don't know. So. The request to us is to approve putting this up on half the building.
That is the request by that can correct.
And our ability is either to say, but if we say no to this. Do they have to come back with something better? Or are we constrained because of grandfathering to be able to do anything else?
I'm gonna back up just a second if that's okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so if they peeled this vinyl siding off and there was a brick underneath it. They could not put the vinyl siding back on because the brick would be a primary, a listed primary material. If it was a textured concrete block, they couldn't put the vinyl back up either. What's behind here is a smooth masonry block, you know, like a foundation block. Um, smoothly, so it's listed as a non-conforming material or a secondary material or it's not a permitted material. So we're just, we're just swapping one non-permitted. One, I'm gonna say, well, one less desirable material for, uh, another less desirable material for our standards. So we've been allowing the even, we've been allowing the even swap. So we've always allowed vinyl for vinyl or vinyl for. Replace a cinder block behind it. The. Only, I mean, could they fix it? They could come in with a thin set brick. And do it. Might be a little more cost prohibitive for them. Uh, they probably would have kept the siding up and just had it look like it looks today. Uh, they can come in with a re-textured the block somehow, or if that's possible. There's very few options on the backside of this. I think it's sticking, it's, it's frame-built particle board on the backside of it. There's probably two or three different building materials underneath all this vinyl siding. Um, so we have historically allowed the swap. Uh, we're just continuing what we have done. And again, uh. This is, this is the solution they brought to us and bringing to you.
Maybe I'll let some of my colleagues chime in on this, but. I don't know why we're, we're settling here when we're pushing. Everybody else to.
Well, and I will say every other, everybody else that we've dealt with so far is new construction or substantial remodel, rehab. I can't think of one. Like all those apartment buildings, you mentioned, great projects, but they're all new construction. If their site was to come in new construction, we wouldn't even be talking vinyl right now.
Right.
So this is just purely, uh, this is probably one of the first outside of the cheesecake factory, which was done before. Sweet cheesecake, which has been done before the process. So this is really our first one out the door with a new process. And it's remodel. It's not, if it's new construction or they were putting an addition on. This would be a completely different discussion and we wouldn't be talking about vinyl at all.
But once it goes on there, they're still, they, they, this could sit there for twenty years.
Yeah, until the property redevelops or they want to do a major addition, yes.
Can I, can I ask a question? Council member is, is it? Is the, is there a, I, I understand the whole reach higher, um. With pushing. Is, is there, is the? I mean, when I look at the packet, this is meant to make some repairs that were caused by the derecho, as, as I read it. So as they're going through and they're updating the color, is, is there a different color? That would, you'd think would work better, um, because as, as Dave mentioned. It's when it's new construction or significant renovation, that's where we can really start to, to. To make those increased strides, um, with, with it being an existing building. That was there before and this is, this is more kind of repair work. But that repair work did trigger the review process, which was an extra step. So is there, is there anything?
I don't know, I can't picture the color on, I mean, I'm. I, again, I, I think it's counter to the message we have been talking about across the whole board with everything from. It, again, and be, I think it's because of the location. I mean, we are right on the main corridor as we look out and say, what is this? What does the visitors coming through our community see? And we've got all of these, you know, different. Things happening along this whole corridor. And now we have a pretty substantial sized. Almost block here of a building and. There's a, something that needs to happen to it and the most we're getting is we're gonna change the siding color. And it just feels very. I'm gonna do the minimum, we're gonna do this and, you know, carry on and it's gonna be. Twenty years from now and we're gonna be talking, they're gonna, oh, their grandfather, there's nothing we can do about that. And I feel like it's like the little house as the city grows up around, you know. I remember that, we used to read that to our kids about the little house on, on the hill. And it becomes, we're gonna end up with these little pockets of that. So, I mean, I, I may not have a choice and there we go, but I. Felt the need to ask the question because it just seems like we're. We're saying two different things depending on new construction versus older areas or what's happening and. You know, how are we reaching higher to ensure this is something we all go like, wow, which we've done throughout this community?
Colette, did you have anything? And then we'll go to Steve.
I, I mean, I hear Sarah and I think Sarah makes a good point, um. And I, I understand what we're talking about here too, right? This idea, so I. I don't, I, I'm struggling because I don't know that there's a solution, but I hear what Sarah's saying and I, like, can have, I have the same sentiments. At the same time, I acknowledge that, right, it was damaged, they're replacing, this is sort of a one for one. Um, you know, should they be punished in essence because of the derecho? If the derecho didn't happen, they'd keep that up there for probably another twenty years. So I, I, I'm not sure of a solution. I hear what you're saying and I, and I acknowledge what you're saying. It is a sort of a prime location. And, um, we have these standards that we're trying to, so I, it was.
That's why I shouldn't have spoke.
Steve?
No, I, I can't understand exactly where Sarah's coming from. I mean, if you got the opportunity to reach higher. You should probably go for that. In this particular situation, I agree with Colette's comment. I don't think we should over penalize. This business and this building in this situation because of derecho damage. I mean, if they didn't have the derecho damage, it would still be light gray siding. So what we're doing is I think following our guidelines that we've had, we've got triggers. That would require them to do something other than vinyl siding. None of those triggers are there, at least as.
Correct.
You've outlined, as P and Z is reviewed. And I think I would have to concur with, so I think if we were to try to say, yeah, we want brick, I think that'd be over penalizing. The situation, which is basically derecho damage. If that was my house, guess what? I'm gonna just put new vinyl siding on it. And everybody in the city that had damage from storms or hail or anything else. You know, you're seeing all these different colors that are out there. To me, that's really the only thing is we got involved in the color scheme. Where we're to say we can't have the blue anymore. Here's your palette of colors to pick from. I'm fine moving on with this. Would I like something different? Yeah, but I don't think we've got these, from my standpoint, the basis to, to, uh. Try to do that, so.
Okay, Will?
I agree with, I, what they all just said, that I, I see your point. And the way I see it also is, is, you know, greater damage, so just repairing. I do like the fact, at first I wasn't sure about the color. But then the more I think about it, it does have that brick color, so it does kind of have a brick look. And then the Steve's comment about reaching higher, I, I guess everyone's comment about reaching higher. In situations like this, not everyone can afford to reach higher. So that goes and comes into my mind too with this situation. I understand, you know, let's, let's do that, but. So I'd be, I'd be okay with this.
Well, I, I'm never short for lacking a comment. I would just have to say incrementally, I think this new color scheme is going to be a better than it is now. Regarding the trigger points that would require a change to the. Exterior materials. Um, I, and I say this from us or ask this from a standpoint of ignorance. Um, are we real clear what the trigger points are that, um, would require a change? And under what condition those trigger points are induced? For example, if there had been substantial structural damage to the walls of this building. Would that then be a trigger point that they would have to redo the exterior and bring it up to, uh, current standard? Or would they be able to rebuild a wall? And put vinyl back up. I'm, what I'm just asking is, is what is the clarity? What are the? What are the inputs to this? Uh, I, I don't know that I need to know that. I just hope we're clear with, with building owners.
I believe we are. There's a, there's a very, very complicated equate, or. It, there's a whole section of the code that deals with non-conforming structures and use. Uh, it's all deals about fifty percent damage of the.
Okay.
Assess value and then you can appeal if it's sixty-five percent more than damage to the zoning board adjustment. I could lay it all out for you. With some time at a future meeting if you'd like, um, but those are the triggers. Now, again, some other triggers, if they were to come out and bring out, we want to bring out a whole new. Entrance, you know, make that entrance pop more. That new entrance area that they put on would have to meet all the new code requirements. It may still have that. Vinyl siding. Uh, on the main facade, but the whole new entrance is gonna be a brick or a some other permitted material.
So.
Be primary.
So our criteria for change and what induces that change, we're clear on and it's complex and it's based on. Level of damage and several other factors. So I'm just great with that. And it's just, I, you know, I, I respect Sarah's position on this, uh, or, you know, her, her, um, desire for us. But we just haven't hit those trigger points that would give us that option. And so. Okay, any other questions? Yeah.
Not, not a question, but really appreciate the conversation and, and the feedback. One thing that I, we'll talk about as a staff is. What we can do. When we meet with the petitioner and talk about the. Once this comes before council for a vote on Thursday. We have to do our follow-up from a customer service standpoint. There are things that we can convey and, and. And stress about opportunities to try to elevate this, this property. So there, there are things we can do that. Just help us reach higher in that respect. I mean, we don't, I think Councilman Jensen, you articulated very well with what we can and cannot do. Um, and I mean, quite frankly, when you look at this area and you had towards, away from the uptown. Um, you know, that's probably one of our next areas for, as we look towards redevelopment, so. But, but I, I think it will be important for us when we meet with the, the petitioner to say, hey, you know what? What can we do to maintain the property a little bit better? Let's be mindful of the grass growing through the cracks on the sidewalk and, and help us. As you're, as you're doing this, this repair work.
Oh, thank you. Okay, we're on to F2, Dave, that's you.
Okay, uh, this is a request for a final plat. Uh, we've seen this several times in the past. I'm not gonna have to reorient everybody to the location. Uh, this is for a final plat of fourteen point three-six acres for the ITC substation. Um. This development had a pretty lengthy, we had some discussions about the deferrals at the last meeting. Uh, those were granted. Uh, this is a pretty lengthy memorandum of agreement to go with it. That's the development agreement that goes with every final plat. Uh, that development agreement lays out all the ITC's responsibilities. When in the city council gets to the point that they'd like to get those improvements in. When I say improvements, again, I mean, uh. The looping water main along Highway one hundred up to forty-fourth street. The actual street itself, sidewalks, storm sewer, uh, sewer, all the, all the necessary improvements. Uh, those triggers are all laid out in the memorandum, uh, that'll be signed by the, uh, the applicant. And obviously by the city and those triggers, there's really no specific trigger other than. And the city council deems it necessary. So theoretically, you could pull two weeks from day. Pull that requirement and have them do it, or it could be five, six years down the road. Once we have actual development. A real reason to have those, uh, infrastructure placed in to the forty-fourth street.
Okay, questions? Okay. Very good, F3.
Uh, next item, uh, the city did not exempt themselves from our own regulations, uh, when it comes to demolition and approvals of sites. Uh, so we're here to, uh. Prove the demolition of the library, former library, uh, as you know, the site will be cleared and seeded. Um, parks has removed, uh, the bike racks that were salvageable. Unfortunately, the benches, uh, were not able to be saved. They had salt and sand and twenty years of grit had damaged the legs on those. Uh, town main street had, uh, had a desire to try to salvage the, uh, little cornerstone in the. Uh, northeast corner of the building, um. That's something we can work in with the demolition with whoever gets awarded. Uh, this was reviewed by the planning and zoning commission last month and they did recommend approval.
Questions? The only question I have, and maybe this is more, uh, for Mike, but when the building comes down, will the existing parking slots still remain?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, the parking slots will all remain. The only area that will be disrupted is the area within the hatched. Um, or within the black batch line. So it'll, it'll be just the building and some of the sidewalks immediately around it. Parking lot will all be retained for public events and public use until such time that there's a redevelopment of a site.
Okay, and what about the area that will be re-seated where the building once was? Would that be made available for parking as well?
It could be overflow parking for right now instead of actually, we don't want it. I'm not saying, if the city council wants to go ahead and pay it, we sure could, but, um, right now it'd be leave it as grass. It could be used for vendor parking. Vendor storage when we have big events or just a little overflow parking occasionally and once everything gets established out there. Uh, but the idea is just to leave it, leave it seated and, uh, I'm sure we'll get the use out of it. Other scenario is it could be a staging ground, uh, it wouldn't look, it wouldn't look, uh, you know, it wouldn't look great, but it could also be a staging ground for the. The plaza, um, reconstruction project as well if that, they wanted to make it there. But obviously there would be a construction, storage site for eighteen months or so.
So that was, uh, the basis of my question was several, uh, comments I received at the library. Uh, this last Saturday morning, people were curious about what was going and. Uh, the common theme of interest, because there was a League of Women Voters event up there, was parking. So that was, uh, kind of material to that old.
Great overflow parking.
Any other questions on that? Okay, Mike? Will?
So you said the bike racks and the cornerstone and all that stuff. Um, what about the special Nancy Miller signs?
That could be something salvages the council desires, we'd have to work it out with.
Have they, uh, been removed yet?
There, there was ones on the outside that have not been removed yet on the, at least I know on the Sixth Avenue side.
But one, one of the things that we've talked about internally is a, a decommissioning process. For the library that, that site. Because of Nancy Miller's, um, involvement with that. So.
I just. If I'm correct, there's an ordinance about those signs. They should have been removed a long time ago.
They, they are, they are, uh, they're abandoned signs technically, so.
Yes.
About eighteen months ago.
Turn around and something. Thank you.
Okay.
Alright.
Thanks, Dave. Mr. Barkalow. He returns.
But this time with really good numbers. So we had an engineer's estimate of half million dollars that we got from a local contractor. Um, and you can see the low bid came in at twenty-four percent of the engineer's estimate. So those are numbers that we like to present. Um, so we're recommending proceeding with the, the low bid from DW Denzer. You can see we had a lot of interest. There was eight bids. Um, some from Minnesota, Wisconsin, so it was a very popular project to bid.
Right. So how fast will that start?
So we'll give, uh, them time to, uh, so it's supposed to be done by May twenty-sixth of twenty-three. It does have some, uh, time in there for our two, uh, departments to go in there and do training, just because this is not a typical type. Structure that they get to, to train in, so both.
just because this is not a typical type of structure that they get to, to train in. So both fire and police will be in there doing some training.
Good. Any questions? Okay, very good. Uh, that brings us to the end of our review. I'll move it over to, um, Dave because we move into a closed session.
I move to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under section twenty-one point five one C of the Code of Iowa.
It's been moved and seconded to move to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under section twenty-one point five one C of the Code of Iowa. May please have the legal statement.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find this name to be appropriate under Iowa code section twenty-one point five point J. See, sorry, today is C, Thursday is J.
Thank you. Uh, any, any questions or comments? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mr. Harbor?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Ms. Mensah?
Yes.
Thank you all. We'll adjourn to closed session. Thank you for your attention and participation.